Trophy Club Municipal Utility District Number One Board of Directors Meeting is now in session. This is a special meeting and we, the time is eleven o'clock and all directors are present. We start with our old regular session, consider and take appropriate action regarding unauthorized discharge to sanitary sewer system by BDMR Development LLP on January twenty-second, twenty-third, 2015, including approval rate for treatment of unauthorized discharge in accordance with section three point oh four of District Rate Order Number 2015-0120B. B, approved financial security for potential fines from regulatory authorities. C, other appropriate action related to the recertification of the damage and problem caused by the unauthorized discharge, including but not limited to insurance claims.
Jim, it's rectification, not recertification.
Okay. Rectification, okay. Jennifer?
Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm gonna start by letting Carl, our wastewater superintendent, just kinda give y'all a little rundown of what happened and how we got to where we are today, which is the, I've asked you all to meet, the contractor is here and I see some representatives of the developer as well. We have put them at a halt on working and they're very much ready to get back out there and get to work. So, I appreciate y'all in such a hurried manner getting this meeting put together. I'm gonna let Carl start by just kinda telling y'all a little bit about what happened.
Good morning, board members. January twenty-second, when we arrived at work, seven o'clock in the morning, we found that the raw pump station at the plant was flooded and it was eighteen feet with all four pumps running. We went through the plant and found the plant was completely flooded, all the way through the plant, from the aeration basins, all the way to the filters, the UV system. We decided to go ahead and see if we could find the problem by tracing it back, popping manholes, and trying to find where the intrusion was coming from. We didn't find it on the twenty-second, on the twenty-third, when the flow started to slow down a little bit, that's when we actually found the problem that was in this development. We found that a pipe had broken in the Waters Edge at Hogan's Glen Development. And from there, we called, actually Mike took care of that, he called and they came out and then they looked at it and they agreed that they had the problem and then they capped it.
So, the reason we, the main reason we needed the board to meet is looking at our rate order, where I went to look to see what we would charge for an unauthorized waste. If you look at section three point oh four, which is in page two of the information I provided you this morning, it states that the rates established are for domestic waste as defined herein and customers that generate other types of waste are assessed additional charges as established by the district. The board is the authority for setting rates and so that is what we called you this morning to take a look at that. And I have provided on page three, an estimation of the cost for both the treatment, cleanup, sampling, our labor, we had to reseed the plant with bacteria as it washed it all out, cost for that, and then just potable water for wash down, which is part of cleanup. So, I've provided a suggested or draft invoice for you on page three. I don't know if any of the representatives have something they'd like to add or speak to the board, but if you would, I do want to address that they're here.
Can I ask some questions before they do that?
Sure.
Kurt, you just said something severely got my attention. You said the plant was completely flooded?
Completely, yes.
Did we have, did we have any elements fall into that creek and go into Lake Grapevine? Cause that, if that's the case, man, our exposure is gigantic.
Well, we did exceed our E coli limits extremely. We got the highest count that you can possibly get.
I mean Jennifer, these numbers on this sheet of paper pale by what we would have to pay if we put stuff in Lake Grapevine.
Yes, and we, well, we did exceed our permit. As Carl was explaining, that the highest read that you can get on the E coli test is twenty-four hundred. It was easily twenty-four hundred, so the, we far exceeded what the test will even sample for, so yes, we did have an exceedance.
Do you see any repercussion coming back from us because of that?
Absolutely, a possibility, yes. It would, the TCQ will, you know, eventually come out and inspect it, they'll look at, we report that, it'll be in our DMR at the, which we'll be reporting very shortly. We've already reported the exceedance, but we'll submit our discharge monitoring report and we definitely can be subject to enforcement. We have already received enforcement action recently, well, within the last couple of years, for wastewater permit discharge exceedances, so that puts us even at a higher risk than if we had never received enforcement before.
Well, guys, look, the reason, the rest of y'all, the reason I was asking this question is remember the discussions we had about the sewer line we had going over the creek? And our reason for putting that thing under the creek was if that thing ever broke, we could potentially be responsible for cleaning up all the way down to Lake Grapevine. And so, we got that same issue here, that this, that plant bleeds into a creek that runs, I walked it one time, it's about, I don't know, one hundred seventy-five, two-hundred yards, and hits, it hits Lake Grapevine. So, it doesn't take long for that water to get there. So, I got a next, another question I wanna ask about. I had heard, did I hear correctly, that is there, is there a procedure that a developer's supposed to go through, a builder, contractor's supposed to go through before they tap into our line and was that procedure followed with this particular tap, number one? And number two, on a sewer line, how in the world did a sewer line put this much water into our system? It's underground, is it not? I mean, they put that thing, they put that thing next to a running water or a creek or what?
Well, what happened when the rain came, they had it all dammed up.
But isn't it supposed to be underground?
Well, that, actually, it's like a pond. When they had the way they dammed it up, it made a pond and the pipe that was sitting in there...
Sewer land, made a pond?
No, no. Where they were digging and making the development, they had it to where it was all dammed up to where it basically flooded with water, the creek did, and the line that they had sitting in there, it floated up and broke, which caused all the water going through there to come to the plant.
So, if a sewer line's not buried?
Correct.
How'd that happen?
It should've been buried, yes. They should've put some kind of dirt, some kind of base on it to hold it down.
Absolutely.
My understanding was they just put gravel on it, which wasn't heavy enough, so when it filled up with water, it was more buoyant than the rocks could hold and it came up and broke. And that whole pond ended up at the wastewater plant.
All right, back to my first question. I assume there is a procedure for tapping into our sewer lines?
Yes.
Was that procedure followed in relation to this particular tap?
Mike is our inspector out there, so I'll let him answer.
I'll take that. Me and Bert's been out there and this is some new sewer that's going in, so these are brand-new manholes. Now, the actual taps that come into our existing lines, they did coordinate with us when they were tapping those and let us know, so we knew that they were tapped in. We just didn't know that they laid that pipe out there and didn't backfill it. That pipe was actually exposed and it should've been backfilled.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, we've, we have a staff recommendations, which I think everybody has seen. Are we at the point where someone would like to make a motion?
Well, Jennifer, she invited the, she invited the contractors to say something if they wanted to, y'all to let them if they would care to.
Well, I didn't see any hands up. Does anybody wanna say anything? Come on up. Would you state your name and come up to the microphone there so it'll get recorded properly?
Don Peak, THB Construction, project manager. And what we had, that is correct, we did make a connection to the existing sanitary sewer there next to the golf course. And we had two things. We were working on the fifteen-inch sewer line, which is running on the back of these lots, which is in that low line area, right there on Hogan's Glen. And the problem was we, we were gonna put the rock on there and go ahead and backfill that hole. Can't, have no, you know, excuse why that wasn't done, that this has never happened in my career, ever doing this, something like this happened. And the other, we had a secondary plug that was installed in the upstream manhole from where we made the connection and it didn't. The ball either leaked down or something or was forced out and that was our other issue that I had that trying to, in case something was to go wrong. With the sewer, we always plug the lines until we have everything installed and everything's in service.
But Don, don't you, now you said you're the supervisor for this.
Yes, sir.
When something's supposed to be closed up, didn't someone have responsibility to come along and see that it was done?
Yes, we did. We had a foreman on the job and they...
So, he didn't do his job?
No, he, his, that was the breakdown and the problem. He was told directly, cause we had rain coming, to cover that pipe up solid with rock and backfill that hole before they left that evening.
Hey, look, please understand something, I, reason, things happen, I mean, they just do. But the reason I'm so concerned is we can get crucified by TCQ if, if stuff went into Lake Grapevine and he tells me this thing flooded, that means something went into Lake Grapevine.
Oh, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I've never been in a situation like this before and I don't know how much water did go through or what, what happened there, or how much was treated, not treated, or if it was treated water, if it was, I don't know. I'm just now taking the information we've been getting from Jennifer and from Mike, what had happened.
Well, you know, that stuff sits in various types of containers as it's being processed and if it's flooded, then you got raw sewage flooding on the ground out there, I assume.
Have you, is this the first project or have you done other phases with Merdod's?
Oh, we've actually done several other jobs here in Trophy Club here recently.
And you're bonded and insured?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the reason I ask is we had another scenario in the PID where a sewer line collapsed because they didn't, you know, use the proper base on it and collapsed the road. So, I mean, if this is kinda like an ongoing or will be an ongoing where we see lines break, it's very concerning to me, you know, and I, there's, check some balances in place to check things and make sure they're installed and obviously things happen like Director Thomas said, but, and when they do happen, it's, you know, it comes to the health and welfare of the people that we serve for, so it's very concerning.
I understand.
Any other questions?
This is more for Jennifer, you know, what happens if TCQ does fine us?
The permit holder is held responsible and we are the permit holder, so if we are fined, we will have to pay the fine. Even though the TCQ doesn't take into account if it's, you know, if it's caused by a third party or what the situation is, they only hold the permit holder responsible. So, in the, the recommendations that I've made, that is one of the recommendations. I also would like to say, I discussed this a little bit with Pam prior to the meeting and I don't know the answer that I think some of you may be looking for of, you know, how long till TCQ fines us, because I don't know. I only have one, one way to gauge that and that is when I came here in March of twelve, there was already a situation for some exceedances underway that you're all aware of and it took about a year and a half before we got to the point where we actually paid that fine. Well, it was, I'm sorry, it was, it was May of thirteen that we actually paid the fine, so a year and several months. So, there, like everything else with TCQ, that, when you're talking about fines, I guess that can be a good thing, but they are very slow and so I don't know when that could occur, but I would say sometime within the next three years, that could easily happen.
What do we do to protect ourselves?
My recommendation and Pam's, after we talked about this, is to have them put up some sort of a financial holding that we can hold on to and for some set amount of time, three years, whatever you all think, that would cover a potential fine if we get one in the future. And that could either be an actual deposit that we hold or it could be a letter of credit. They, the developer may have some suggests, some suggestion of a financial mechanism that they wanna use, but, and I do wanna point that out, that the town has a contract only with the developer. It is the developer who has a contract with the contractor. And so, when we look at these things, we look at this towards the developer, that is who the contract is with. So, any type of agreement that, that you all would like to consider on that, that would need to be between the district and the developer, whoever that may be.
Is there any way to find out what the TCQ has done in the way of fines for people in the past that have allowed illegal material to get into Lake Grapevine?
Westlake was forty thousand, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was about, I think thirty-six, yes. It can be what it states, what their enforcement say is up to twenty-five thousand dollars per day, per violation. So, we have a violation of, it was just one on our E coli, is that correct or?
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, so just one, so it could be, that would be what they would fine us for is that E coli exceedance. Although, Carl, I better kinda get your input on this, are there, is there anything else that you're aware of that they could look at specifically related to this besides the E coli?
Honestly, I don't think there is. I mean, if, we already walked the creek to ensure that there was nothing in the creek all the way to Grapevine and we didn't find anything, but that's not to say that they might walk the creek, they might find something, you know, that could tie it back to the wastewater plant and fine us for that.
Okay, but we didn't, we didn't have any other?
No.
BOD, TSS, anything like that?
Actually, I haven't got the results back for the BOD and the TSS and stuff.
Oh, we don't have those back yet?
No, they should come back this week.
Okay.
So, I will know then.
So, Carl, you did take test of the, of whatever's in the creek downstream from the plant, between the plant and the great, and the lake?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, when you get that back, we should know.
And what he's saying is we, and we don't have the rest, the, the BOD and TSS is a test that has to be sent off and it takes a while to get it back, so we have not received the results back on those yet. But if, if either of those exceeded, or any of our permit limitations, if we exceed those, that is another, another item, so it would be per violation per day. And right now, we, we know it could be for E coli, but that's all we know.
That's why I was saying earlier that this seventeen could pale.
I got a question. Director Cora, just some clarification, the plant did not overflow into the creek, did it? Just the measurements were up?
The plant did overflow into the creek, yes.
Yes.
We had to actually open a bypass because if we wouldn't, then it would be on the ground and on the golf course and everywhere else.
Okay, and then the second thing is, and right now, we're just throwing darts at a dollar amount, we have no idea, correct? So, I, you know, where do you draw a line and make, you know, the developer, contractor, whoever, put something, a letter of credit? I mean, what dollar do you come up with?
Till we know what the ramifications could potentially be, I agree with Kevin, how do you, how do we even decide today?
And then...
I mean, if you, look, you're talking about twenty-five thousand a day, what you've seen in the past, two days of this thing on E coli, that's fifty thousand. If you've got CBODs, that's another fifty thousand, if you've got a no, that's another fifty thousand. This thing could be one hundred and fifty, two hundred thousand dollars in fines and until we know what we're faced with, I'm not about to release these guys.
Yeah, Pam, is there anything that we could draw up that makes them responsible for any, I guess, monetary funds that we're fined or?
We certainly could draw something up, that would take some negotiation and I don't know that we can do that this morning unless they want to speak to that today, if they would be willing to agree to cover whatever the fines are, but I know this board will want security on that and would want something put up. And an agreement could be reached where, once we know that potential amount, that they would agree to put that up through a financial mechanism that is acceptable to us, which could be actual money being held, it could be a letter of credit, something that would give this board security about the fines that may come. And if there are no fines or if there are less fines, that would be refunded back to the poster.
And Don, please understand, I'm just worried about protecting us from some kind of future action.
Yeah, the other concern is, you know, if you do get a document saying they're, they're sure that, what's to say, you know, not to say you're gonna do it, but they go out of business or something, bankruptcy, and then it's like not worth anything.
So, this board may require actual funds posted and held to potent, to cover any potential fines.
Okay.
An amount that we are secure would cover any potential fines.
Okay, the other question I had, and Jennifer kinda mentioned a little bit about it, is the process where, and I've been in meetings where, and the CFAB and the Blue Ribbon went through this, is, you know, we put too many hurdles or requirements on developers as far as let's have a one-stop shop, go through the town. The town is not into wastewater and water business, that's our expertise. We have professionals that are aware of that. In my opinion, those days are gone as far as having things go through the town and then come back on us if something goes wrong. We need to be accountable and, you know, have the authority to make sure these lines, we don't have a lot of development going in left over, but we need to, as a mud board and mud staff, we need to be responsible for these infrastructures going in inspection, making sure that developers are accountable, bonded, insured, so on.
And Neil did request at our last meeting back in January that the staff be working on some kind of a procedure with that and we should have something ready to present at the February meeting, so. I wanna, I wanna mention one other thing, as you're talking about the, the future fines and those possibilities, I know I've heard several times from Lance and from Mr. Peak, there, we, we did put them on hold and they do want to get back to work and finish up their project. I do wanna say that in the time that, if it takes some time to negotiate, I, I hope that we can let them go back to work. What we can, I think the concern is, well, how do we make sure we get something to, to hold in case we get fined in the future? We do not have to accept the infrastructure as far as for setting meters or as, you know, to provide water or sewer service to that development until we, till you all get to the, that you're satisfied with that. In other words, I, I do think it would be okay for us to let the, let them go back to work with, and getting the development ready, but in the end, we will not accept that infrastructure until we've come to some kind of an agreement on how we'll hold something or what we'll do if there's future fines.
I'd like to hear, are you agreeable to letter of credit or, you know, documents or?
Well, again, he's the contractor, so I don't think he's...
Well, Steve...
That's something we'll work out with, with the developer as well to...
And it's gonna come down through you somehow, does Mr. Leonard wanna reply? I mean, I know you're Dodd's right hand.
I'm Steve Leonard, Leonard Development, five-twenty Central Parkway East, Suite 104, Plano, Texas, seven-five-zero-seven-four. A letter of credit, whatever mechanism makes the most sense for both parties. I don't know, I just wrote down a note to see what type of bonds are out there that could potentially, because the concern with any kind of document, what is the outside date on it? And I realize the, you were saying, three years, so there might be some type of a bonding mechanism, a letter of credit, that those two would be the two that would jump to my forefront. But I think, you know, obviously, something happened, we need to correct and we're here to stand by it. I mean, the sewer failure, just to be clear, that you were speaking of on the PID, that was one of the city projects, that wasn't ours, on the Highland side from four or five years ago. That was one of their contractors, who was a subcontractor of the city that, where that sewer failed. But with that being said, we're here to stand by whatever we need to, to get it done. I think a letter of credit or hopefully a bond of some sort would work.
So, you, you feel that this seventeen thousand, seven-twenty-five or whatever it is, is, you know, fair as far as it?
Well, Kevin, he hasn't seen that.
Oh, you haven't seen it?
Yeah, the number I was told was roughly around thirteen thousand. All I'll say is whatever's fair is fair. This is obviously new territory for us on our end, never experienced anything like this, so a mistake was made, the weather hit at the worst time and we got a problem, we gotta deal with it. So, you know, I think, again, whatever is, is the fair number, is the fair number, but...
Steve, I, I do wanna add, I did tell Lance about thirteen because at that, when we were talking last week, that was, he, he was asking how much water it was.
Sure.
And I told him what I was recommending as far as an amount, but I had not got all the costs together as far as the, you know, the labor and the file, the reporting and all of that stuff, which is here, it, all total, it comes out to be seventeen thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents. The water, or the wastewater treatment itself is right at thirteen thousand, it was twelve seven eighty.
Okay.
Steve, speaking for myself, you know, continued development means tax base, which is good for us, so I absolutely would like to find a way to prevent you guys from having to stop, you know, and if we can just come up with something that protects us long-term, I think we can put this down.
Sure, and I, again, dealing with the TCQ, y'all do a lot more than I do, but I, I realize that's a bit of a moving target that we have to deal with. We just, you know, bottom line is, the whole project's sitting dead in the water in this time period that we have to work through everything. We're just trying to prevent that from happening so we don't have issues with our lenders, that's all. But regardless, whatever fine is applicable, we understand that and then same thing, under, some kind of an agreement to protect you from the TCQ in the long run.
Jennifer, how quickly can we come up with something between Steve's group and Pam that would, we felt would protect us?
We can have something ready for y'all at the February meeting.
Yeah, but I don't, that means they gotta sit, sit in the water for three weeks.
I think we...
I think we can make a motion that we can allow them to get back to work contingent on that we have acceptable...
An agreement that's acceptable, yeah, okay.
Pam, am I not right that we probably have two motions that we should consider? Item A, which would be approval of the seventeen thousand dollars?
Yes, sir.
And that would be one, one motion and another motion then would cover, Neil, what you're talking about.
Having agreements in place.
Yeah, okay.
I, I'll, I'll take a stab at a motion, I make a motion that on the Gen A, that we have the general manager submit the invoice that's in our packet to BDMR Development LLP for seventeen thousand, thirty-six, seven hundred and thirty-six?
Seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Thirty-five, yeah, eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight, okay, as stated. On B, I would, I'd like the general manager and legal counsel to...
Kevin, can we take these as two separate motions?
Okay. Go ahead and...
I'll second the item A.
Motion's made and seconded, any further discussion?
Just to state, say, Steve, when you see the sheets, they're the numbers exactly of what the cost was, were associated with this.
Any further discussion? Neil?
No, no. I was ready to go.
Okay, so, so am I. All those in favor? It is unanimous, folks. Now, we have another motion.
I'd like to make it on, on B regarding, B on our agenda item, that our general manager and legal representatives have an agreement to us by our February seventeenth meeting that we can consider regarding potential liability due to the TCQ and maybe any other matters that they may come up with and, and to allow the developer and the contractor to proceed with their work, but contingent on us having an acceptable agreement at our next meeting date, which is in two, two weeks and one day, which is on the seventeenth.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, discussion?
I'd, I'd like to, you mentioned agreement, but I'd also like to look at a letter of credit and if you would put a, a dollar amount to it, maybe fifty thousand or something like that?
Well, I'll put up to, right now, I'll put up to two hundred thousand, simply because if it's determined it should be less, it can be less, but I mean...
Okay, but your, your motion includes a possibility, a letter of credit?
Yes.
Okay, I'll...
Or cash, or whatever is deemed appropriate.
Okay, I'll second amendment.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Jennifer asked you a question, Carl, about, I think the question was, how many days did it drain into Lake Grapevine and you said one instead of two? Should we be multiplying the expected to the best of our ability?
Should we be multiplying the expected, to the best of our ability, fine times one or times two?
I think times one. By the second day, we actually had been able to contain it in the plant. The first day, the twenty-four hours, we couldn't. But by the second day, we actually got it to where it would actually stay in the plant.
Now, do you have a, a opinion of how many different excesses that we might be potentially subject to? In other words, BODs and E. coli and what's the approximate number of different chemicals that may have gotten in Lake Grapevine? Is it two or three or?
Well, actually, it was a severe hardship on the wastewater plant. We actually did not actually gain any ground with the plant itself till Friday. Today's the first day and it's actually looking decent. Our ammonia levels were extremely high all week last week. We couldn't get anything lower than, you know, tens.
Was that ammonia another?
Yes.
Chemical?
BOD, ammonia, TSS, E. coli, those are the ones that we will probably be for.
And Carl, I think, I think what he's trying to ask you is, will, do you feel like that if we have any additional exceedances, it will only be from that first day? Or do you think any?
No, it wouldn't be. It would be fathering the whole week, actually.
Okay.
Because we couldn't get our hands around what we needed to do. And it ain't just, it isn't just ammonia we have to worry about. It's ammonia maximum, ammonia seven day average.
Oh, yeah.
And ammonia thirty day average. So one constituent will actually cost you three times.
Carl, will you get the report, the lab reports back you've submitted? Between now and our next meeting, will we have a better idea of how many failures we're up against?
Oh, yes. By that time, I'll actually have the, the monthly report done and I'll have all the numbers.
Neil, would you consider leaving your amount open-ended until we have more information?
You mean going up?
No, well, I don't, we may have to go up. I, I, I just don't want you to say not to exceed two hundred thousand when we, we, for God's sakes, we don't know what it is. We should know by the seventeenth, though. And it doesn't stop us, that doesn't stop them from continuing on. It just, it allows us to the seventeenth to say if it's a, it's a higher limit, we can do that.
Let's just say the appropriate estimate.
There you go.
And that way.
There you go.
If we're, we're concerned about it.
Could be less, could be less.
Or less.
Right.
So appropriate estimate.
I'm fine with that, Second Amendment.
Laurie, you got that all right?
And I should have a better understanding of what we actually have by Monday of next week, Monday or Tuesday. That'll give me a time to put it all together.
Okay, any further discussion?
I wanted to ask Jennifer, the twenty-five thousand dollar figure that you mentioned in connection with E. coli, is that a figure that also applies to ammonia?
Yes. What, what the TCQ rules say is that they can, they can fine you up to twenty-five thousand dollars per violation per day. So it doesn't matter, I guess, what the violation is, but if you have only won that day, then you only get the one twenty-five thousand.
They do have it up to twenty-five thousand?
That's what in their enforcement guide it says, yes.
So Neil's motion covers, when we get the report back, we'll know the, an accurate potential maximum that we can put in to a letter of credit amount. And that sounds reasonable?
Steve.
Okay. I'm getting, I'm getting nods.
Is that sounding reasonable for you guys?
Okay, good.
Does anyone?
Yes, we'll see what it is first.
Does anyone else have anything to say before we vote on this? Or Ed, do you have anything?
Oh, I don't.
Okay.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? It is unanimous. We will now move into our closed session. Pam, would you like to read the description for me?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to Section five five one point oh seven one, the district will consult with its attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Open Meetings Act or to seek advice of counsel on legal matters involving pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offers. A, agreement regarding relocation of utility infrastructure improvements, Solana, with Maguire Partners Solanaland LP. B, temporary restraining order, temporary injunction and permanent injunction proceedings pending in the forty-eighth District Court of Terent County, Texas.
Thank you. The time is now eleven thirty-four and we will convene into a closed session. Thank you, gentlemen. Item three, consider and take appropriate action regarding the closed session. Does anyone wish to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make the following motion, that the agreement we discussed under two A in the executive session, that we approve that agreement as discussed and have our legal representatives prepare that document for us.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Let me just clarify, to be signed by President, to be executed by President Moss, correct?
I'll, I'll include that, yes.
And I second that as well.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor? It is a unanimous vote.
Before, before we adjourn.
Yes.
Do we need to say what time we reconvened in?
Yeah, we should have.
Yes, that's correct.
But we didn't.
Twelve oh four.
Okay. Regular session reconvened at twelve oh four. The meeting is now adjourned at twelve oh five.